Hey. Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the June 10th City of Oak Harbor Planning Commission meeting. I'm going to call us to order at 6:00 PM. And our first order of business is our roll call. All of our members are present except for Commissioner Kevin Wilson. Moving right along, we will move to our approval of the May 13th, 2025, meeting minutes. I'll give you all a minute to look over them. If you have anything that you want to change, we can talk about that. Otherwise, when you're ready, I will take a motion to approve them.
I'll make a motion to approve as written.
Second.
Moved by Frye, second by Bradley. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. Okay. Moving right along to our public comment period. During this time, folks may comment on subjects of interest not on the agenda or agenda items. To ensure those comments are recorded properly, please state your name clearly. Individual comments will be limited to three minutes during this time. You may also submit written comments at least two business days prior to, at www.okeharbor.gov backslash public comment. We receive one public comment online, and that is on display now. Okay, thank you very much. So, we will move on to folks who want to comment in person first. Not seeing anybody. We will move to folks online. Not seeing anyone. Going once, going twice, three times. Thank you all for your participation, and thank you for sending in comments. Our next item will be our two public hearings for tonight. Our first will be a proposed code amendment on Chapter 1947 land clearing. During these public hearings, interested parties will be given the opportunity to provide testimony or offer comments. Please record, state your name into a microphone to ensure that your comments are recorded. So with that, our first public hearing is on our development regulations presented by Ray Lindberg, or Dennis, will be presented by our, one of our planners, Dennis LeVever. Take it away when you're ready.
All right. Thank you, Mr. This is Dennis LeVever. Good evening, members of the commission. This is your final step for this proposed code amendment, and the purpose of this amendment, per slide please, Tim, is because currently land clearing and grading are administered by two separate divisions in the city. One, the land clearing is administered by Development Services, while the grading permitting is handled by the Engineering Division of Public Works. So we thought that since clearing and grading are so very closely linked, that shifting the land clearing responsibilities over to engineering would make for a much better process and would assist in any applications that would come through for either land clearing or grading. I mean, they can be looked at under one microscope, basically. So, the other purpose of this code amendment is to provide the regulatory guidance for both of these sections in one municipal code chapter. The reason for a new chapter is quite simple. Landing and grading is closely linked to other geologically hazardous areas, other environmental issues such as flood damage prevention, vegetation preservation, stormwater, water quality. So it made good sense in looking at moving this into our Title 20, which is our environmental title. I also looked at other communities as well, and the majority of them had clearing and grading both in their environmental title. It's also consistent with other environmental state laws, such as forest practices which the DNR administers and the Shoreline Management Act, which Department of Ecology administers. And this will also assist in making the permit process in Title 19 a little bit smoother, as Nolan will address actually in the next public hearing. So the process to date, we certainly had coordination with the Engineering Department on this code amendment. We did a chapter preparation, and we also prepared a State Environment Policy Act checklist. We had a determination of nonsignificance issued. The appeal closed actually yesterday. We did not receive any comments on that CIPUP. We also did our due diligence with the Department of Commerce, where they require a 60-day notification for any proposed code amendments. We bounced the proposed ordinance off illegal, and they submitted their comments back, which have been incorporated into your draft. Plus, you've had an opportunity to review this proposed code amendment, both at your January and your April meetings, and of course, tonight's public hearing. And the City Council also has had several touches on this. They had a touch on their January meeting, and also their April meeting, and July 1st will be their public hearing for approval of this amendment. The, tonight's public hearing, next slide please, Tim, is standardized under our Municipal Code 1820.272(c), which requires any amendment to development regulations, or any regulations for that matter, to have a public hearing before the Planning Commission, and any action taken by the Planning Commission should take the form of a recommendation to the City Council. This public hearing was duly noticed, and staff's recommendation to the Planning Commission is to transmit a recommendation for approval. Now, staff has a recommended motion, which is up on the last slide here, and I would be happy to respond to any questions you might have.
Okay. Thank you very, thank you very much. Do any of you have any questions before we open the public hearing? Go for it.
Yeah, I just have one real quick. If you're consolidating this, which makes all the sense in the world to Public Works, does Public Works have the staffing for that, or will there be additional staffing that's required to handle that?
No, it's my understanding they have the staffing currently available to handle both clearing and grading. So yes, they do have the staffing available.
Okay, thank you.
Anything else?
Oh, no.
Okay. Thank you very much, Dennis. So, we will move along to open our public hearing. So folks who want to comment on this or provide testimony, this is your opportunity. Not seeing anyone online or in person. Going once, going twice, three times. Okay. So, hearing no one, we will move along and close the public hearing. So yeah, so if there's any further discussion we want to have, we can do that now. Otherwise, I will take a motion for, for this ordinance, or for this, yeah, for this amendment. There we go.
I move to recommend approval to the City Council of Ordinance Number 2025, repealing Oak Harbor Municipal Code, Chapter 19.47, land clearing, and adding Chapter 20.15 of the Oak Harbor Municipal Code for land clearing and grading.
Second.
All right. Moved by Frye, second by Bradley. Any last thoughts before we vote? Okay. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right. Motion passes unanimously. So we will move on to our next public hearing, which is a public hearing on proposed code amendments to Chapter 18.20 of Oak Harbor Municipal Code related to procedural requirements. And this is going to be presented by our planner Nolan Grunska. Take it away when you're ready.
As stated, this is a proposal for an update to our Chapter 1820 on review timelines. This is prompted by new state legislation, SB 5290, which updated the Local Project Review Act, Chapter 3670B RCW, imposing new project permit review timelines that were effective January 1st, 2025. So the purpose of this proposal is to bring our code into compliance with the new requirements. While conducting a review of our code for compliance with these requirements, we also found a couple of vestigial references to old zoning, which has been removed from our code, as well as an obsolete countercomplete procedure, which is not statutorily relevant. So we thought to remove it from the code. In all, there are seven sections of Chapter 1820 that are being proposed to be amended. To give a summary of the changes, the code currently requires review to be completed within 120 days for Type 2, 3, and 4 permits. But per SB 5290, we have amended the code to read that 65 days is the maximum timeline for projects that do not require public notice, otherwise known as Type 1 projects, 100 days for projects requiring public notice, Type 2 projects, and 170 days for projects requiring a public hearing, Type 3 and 4 projects. Type 5 projects are exempt from these timelines. The legislation also specifies that days must specifically be counted as calendar days and not business days. This is a list of all the sections which are proposed to be amended in order to reflect these changes, and staff is recommending approval of these amendments. This is the language that has been drafted for that approval, and I'm happy to take any questions that you have.
Very cool. Short and sweet. Do either of you have any questions on this one? Okay. One question I have, are you that sort of, in the components that go from 120 to less than 120, are you expecting that to be a strain on staff, or do the permits that you are typically seeing, are, do those, are those completed well before that, or is that going to be a challenge for us?
No, Type 1 and Type 2 permits are generally very straightforward. There can be difficulties with the timeline, mostly just as a function of how our permitting is organized. And we're working with Lama, our permitting software currently, to reflect those changes and how our calendars and the organization of those files are done. But in terms of the workload for processing those permits, we don't expect it to be a challenge.
Very cool. All right. Thank you.
Could you please explain what a Type 1, 2, and 3 permit is?
Yes. So in Chapter 1820, all of the different project types that come through the city, you know, be it, you know, maybe an annexation or a short plat, are classified into different project types based on roughly how strenuous the requirements for getting through that project process are. Type 1 permits are the most simple. They're usually administrative decisions that do not require public notice, up to Type 5, which is the most complex, which are projects that require the full range of noticing, as well as going to City Council for approval. You know, in the middle, you have hearing examiner decisions, Type 2 projects are ones that require notice, but are still administrative decisions. So it's just a, it's just a leveling system that classifies permits in terms of their complexity and their statutory requirements.
Okay. Any last questions for Nolan? Okay. So we'll move right along, and we'll open our public hearing for this item. Folks are, if they want to comment, are more than welcome to. Not seeing anyone online or in person. So we'll move right along and close the public hearing. Thank you all for your comments. So any, we have our recommended motion. I'll take that when you're ready, and then we can, or if there's any more discussion that you all want to have.
All right. I move to recommend approval of an amendment to Chapter 18.20 of the Oak Harbor Municipal Code pertaining to procedural requirements for permitting.
I'll second that motion.
All right. Moved by Bradley, second by Frye. Any last thoughts? Any last comments? All right. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right. Motion passes unanimously. All right. With that, we are out of our public hearings and on to our discussion item. So this is, see ya. This is our 2025 major comprehensive plan update, presented by our principal planner Kat Kamak, and take it away when you're ready.
Thank you. Good evening, members of the commission. Kat Kamak, Senior, or Principal Planner. Old habits. So here to update the Planning Commission on our comprehensive plan process, where we are, the packet includes a letter that, correspondence that we vetted with the City Council, that we sent over to Island County, that captures some of the redistribution requests that the county had asked us to consider, along with a map that shows the city's thoughts on potential expansion areas. So I have a few slides that hopefully will walk us through some of the foundation behind the letter, and then we can maybe have a discussion on any questions or thoughts that the commission has. So, growth targets, I think at the last Planning Commission meeting in April, we talked about how important targets are. What's capacity? What's the difference between capacity and targets? And why do we need these targets? Because our 20-year plans are dependent on that. We used population counts, and we still do, but that was the only number that we used in prior updates for the 20-year planning. Now, the state has asked all the counties and cities to consider housing units as a form of growth planning, and not only just the number of housing units, but also a breakdown of the income level that those housing targets need to serve. So not only are we kind of looking at growth differently, looking at it in terms of not only population, but housing units, but also a variety of housing types for the different income levels to plan for. So, the next 20-year plan is dependent on how you craft these policies. It depends on how these growth targets. That's how we plan, in our previous plans for specific population target, we plan for growth targets. So, this is the kind of conversation that we are currently having with Island County, because the original allocation for Oak Harbor and its UGA, or for Oak Harbor included the UGA. So they did not allocate only to the city. They allocated to the city and the UGA. So, in trying to determine the plan, we can plan as a city, we plan for the city limits, and what zoning you can change, what regulation you can change. So, you have to determine how much of that growth you can take in the city, and how much of that has to end up in the unincorporated UGA. And then, that allows for both the city and Island County to start crafting plans to address those targets. So that is currently the conversation we're having back and forth with the county, because it wasn't predetermined in the countywide planning policies on exactly what the city should, numbers, numbers in the city should be. So, I have up here on the slide what is currently on the table, and what we're talking about. So, we have Oak Harbor's targets, and the 3,735, and the share of the total allocation. And you can see it's mostly about approximately 67%. That's the kind of, the original shift that the countywide planning policy was trying to do. Today, on the historical past, 60% of the growth went to Island County. Only, less than 30% was in Oak Harbor. So it didn't make sense. So this planning update is trying to plan to make that switch, to try and get more growth in Oak Harbor, and not as much in, in the rural parts of Island County. And so the shift was made with about 60-plus percent being allocated to Oak Harbor. So, anyway, within that allocation, the city of Oak Harbor is taking about 67% of the share, and the rest is proposed to be accommodated in the UGA, which is approximately 1,797 units. So, we shared with the Planning Commission at the last presentation, not only about the targets, but we also looked at the comparison between the land use options and the development regulations we did from the first try, before the county requested the redistribution. And then we did a different land use option with higher heights and so on. And, so, we've done the development regulation changes and so on within the city, and so now we are saying, what can, you know, what are the areas for expansion? So, just to kind of go with the targets, and how do you, how do you determine, you know, the areas for expansion, and how can we propose as a city into the county's process for UGA amendments? So, there's a slight difference between doing a UGA expansion when you're not doing a comprehensive plan update. So you do the comprehensive plan update every eight to 10 years, and that's when you're supposed to consider UGA expansions based on the growth. However, the countywide planning policies and the RCW state allows for UGA expansions to happen when an update is not in process. Now, that process was, is normally initiated by a city, because there's some sort of a change that is being demanded on that city. It could be a large commercial enterprise locating and wanting to acquire land that can generate jobs, economy, et cetera, that's coming at a time that is not an update that needs service. So at that time, the process for how you change the UGA is different. The city would have to request this amendment of the county, along with the applicant, and the process of trying to justify that is a different process. When you do it as part of the update, it is the county's responsibility to accommodate these UGA expansions and look at them from a broader county and policy standpoint for the overall county. And in that process, the county is actually making the determination, the cities are providing input. It's not a request, so to speak, providing input into how this expansion can be accommodated in the UGA. So, the map that was included, along with the letter, is the starting point where the city says, "We understand that there's a deficit in the UGA. Their existing UGA can accommodate only 464 units. There's a deficit for about 1,333." And where, so the expansion question is out there. So how do you do that? How do you determine that? So, in Oak Harbor's input, we took information from the county's letter, in which they calculated the existing capacity, which is they calculated that as six units per acre. So we used that six unit per acre as a foundation measure, and how many, and determined how many acres you need for 1,333 units, and came up with 222 acres approximately, to accommodate the residential growth. So, that's kind of the baseline number that, that we need to provide the county input on, you know, at least 222 acres, and I'll go through and, and let you know how that area increased to where it is in the letter. So, in considering any UGA expansions, I think there are RCWs and the countywide planning policies that have some process on how do you go about, if there is an expansion in need, how do you go about doing it? And one of the first things you have to consider is trade. Is there any land in the existing UGA that could be traded for equal areas and same land use, and can you accommodate it that way without having to actually expand it, you know? And then if trade doesn't work, then you talk about how do you expand. So in our letter, we took the opportunity to address both of those, because there are some areas in the city's existing UGA that are challenging to develop because of the regulations and restrictions on them, that if you trade those, that you may have more opportunities elsewhere. So, we've included a trade portion in the letter, and also expansion areas, and we chose expansion areas by contiguity and serviceability, and also serviceable by transit and so on. So, serviceability means that you don't have to build big public infrastructure systems to make that area serviceable, in the sense, we have an existing sewer or water, and if a property owner is within this area, and they want to connect to the sewer to develop, they don't have to build a forest main, or even if they have to, it's a direct connection into one of our lines, and it doesn't have terrain challenges that they have to go through. And some of these could be real challenges. It could be in our UGA forever and never develop if you don't have the right serviceability for them. So the, the areas were basically chose, chosen based on some of these criteria. So I'll go over some of these areas on the map that was provided. So this was the map that was attached in the letter, and I'll go over some of them. I may flip back and forth, just based on what we're talking about. So this is the area that's in the UGA. This is by Preston Harbor Road and Torpedo Road, about, and it's designated as commercial, about 26 acres or so. This property is right adjacent to the accident potential zone. The accident potential zone probably clips the, the top right-hand corner of that, of that area. But it's also in the high noise area, which is also an additional restriction. So you not only have the accident potential zone, which restricts uses, but you also have it in the high noise area, which takes out even other uses from being able to locate there. So it's very difficult, given the infrastructure that you have to build to get something really viable in terms of commercial. So this area has been sitting for quite a bit, and we think that it would be a good opportunity to trade this land, maybe for other commercial land, that can potentially not have these restrictions and take on mixed uses and other things that still, that will support our, our goals and policies. So, that's the, the reason for kind of considering this trade, and where will this commercial land, where will the receiving land be? And I think that land could be a combination of the Highway 20, what's calling the Waterloo area, or the Fort Nugent and Boone Road area. So, these could be the receiving areas for that trade. But these areas have also been located or identified as fairly serviceable and contiguous to the existing city limit. So contiguous to the existing city limit is important, because it gives more options for connecting infrastructure. So for example, this area, you have almost two sides of the city, of this area contiguous with the city limits, which means multiple property owners have the chance of getting development proposals going, because they're contiguous to the city and can, can connect to the sewer. So there's more options here, and so this was one of the areas that was more favored for expansion. So was this area. This area actually slopes away from Highway 20, and actually is, gets challenging the bigger and bigger you get with this area. So, we looked at, what do we So we looked at what it would take to connect to services either along 20 or there's a sewer connection, I think, that goes by Eagle Vista. And it seemed like this area is the most efficient and it is also contiguous, we said, to the north for multiple properties to take advantage of that. So those were the areas that were included based on those criteria. And the other area of interest was the Heller Road and Crosby Avenue. This is again, a key corner in the city that could be more than it is right now, very close to services, very serviceable. And so this is mostly comprised of wetlands, but there are properties, there are, there is terrain, I would say, along the, along the street front, just that could potentially take advantage of that. Unfortunately, these properties are large and we'll have to, when you calculate the area, that you take into account the area that is also encompassed by wetlands. So it gives some density bonuses and so on to consider and could potentially develop into a neighborhood center or a neighborhood corner, again, with some commercial proposed on the corner, just calculated out of existing lots that are there. So those were the three areas actually that were suggested to the city council. And during our meeting at, with the city council, the council wanted to include areas by Fort Nugent, oh, sorry, by Swan Town Road. Now originally, staff did not propose any expansions in this area because lands here are not contiguous to the city limit. They're contiguous to the UGA boundary, they're not contiguous to the city. And they have lands that are regulated in the county as rural lands of significance. And so they are low priority for development and UGA inclusions. But the city council felt strongly that this is potentially one of the best strategies you can apply if you want to have development here or demand for development here, bring sewer along Swan Town. And then if you can get the sewer extensions, then people in the Hillcrest area will have more access to that sewer and have more ability to connect to it. And so there was some strategic thinking from the council's standpoint on including these areas in as well. And I think staff recognized that it's a good strategic move. However, this may not add to our target, add capacity, just because it's not contiguous, it's hard to get them the services that they need under our current policies. So this was proposed in the letter as an expansion option. So I think if you look at the letter, that if, so in the county's consideration for UGA expansion, they can take into account a lot of criteria. They'll have to, of course, make sure they meet the minimum criteria of meeting all the RCWs and the countywide planning policies. But if they want to support more growth in urban areas as opposed to rural areas and want to apply more strategies in terms of how to direct growth to Oak Harbor, these are the options for, they have many options to consider. So the city has provided more than two hundred and twenty-two acres worth of suggestion. It's up to the county to now look at it to see what would best fit with the numbers that they are thinking and where it should be. And that's their, it's their authority. They, they are the ones that vote on where the UGA should be. It's not the city council that does, that does that, it's the county commissioners. So this is our recommendation to them. How we achieve these targets in the future, all of that, we are recommending that we talk about it outside of our comp plan process because we cannot try and solve all of those issues before we update our comp plan. Let's agree on the targets, let's plan for those targets, let's move ahead. And how we get to the targets, we can call out in each of our individual plans in terms of what process we would follow to try and come to an agreement on how targets could be achieved in the UGA. So that is kind of the path forward, at least we think. But we are still in mediation and we don't know how things will come out of it. I'll keep you updated, but this is our current targets that are on the table right now. So here's just a table. This is not included in your, in your letter. I thought I would just kind of share with you kind of in a table form, you know, what's the breakdown of the, of the acres? You know, this is the, the trade at Crescent Harbor, twenty-six acres. And then the expansion areas by Crosby and Heller, residential and commercial acreages are broken down, again, Fort Nugent and Boone Road, Waterloo and SR 20. And with just this expansion area, it's about two hundred and fifty, again, about twenty-eight acres more than the two hundred and twenty-two. So again, options there. Now forty acres of commercial in the expansion areas, out of which twenty-six would be trade. So the expansion would be about fourteen acres of commercial for a total of two ninety. Now the expansion option on Swan Town was just calculated separately, just to give the county the option to consider that separately if they wanted to, with the residential being at seventy-one acres and commercial being eight acres. And there is land designated as LRS, as thirty-nine, which, you know, currently, I don't think we can designate that as either residential or commercial unless the county wants to change that designation. So we've left that open because it's an unknown, unknown land use. We cannot calculate any units on them. So we've just identified that as separate. So that's how we get the four hundred and thirty-four acres that's currently in the letter. So just wanted to give you a breakdown of that. So what if we agree, what are the next steps? The next steps would be, first of all, we have to agree and finalize the growth targets. That's our key. That's what moves our needle forward. And then once we finalize that, we'll start to draft, develop a draft plan. But what does it take to develop the draft plan? We'll have to draft a climate change element as well. We still have two OPAC meetings left. There's a community survey still that'll probably go out. We have open houses that are still planned because we got to go out to the community and talk about all these land use options and all of these expansions, get input from them, and then come back here and make a decision. So we still have all of that to do, only after we establish the targets can we go out and engage the community on, on, on that and get their input. So we have all of that. There's also the potential determination of significance that is possible. You know, we are going to exceed our population threshold that our original EIS for the comp plan had, and we're taking on substantial growth. I think those are two good reasons to consider whether this is significant enough for us to do, to evaluate and see alternatives. So that's what the EIS will do. It will hopefully run concurrently with the update. It'll evaluate some alternatives. We pick an alternative, do a final EIS, draft plan, final plan. So we've got a lot of steps more to go. Our plan was to complete this by December twenty twenty-five. I'm not sure if we'll hit that mark. We may be a few months over at this time just because of some of the challenges we've had. I'm hoping that we can, we can get to these growth targets and then it'll be full speed on trying to, there'll be a lot of, I'll be here again, every planning commission meeting and city council meeting giving you guys updates, there'll be a lot of things to consider in the next year. So those are the next steps. So with that, I'll end my presentation and open it up to questions and comments.
Okay. Thank you very much. Anyone want to start off? Go for it.
Hey, thanks, Keck. I appreciate that. It was a good brief. Looking at the wild dryer side, I know you was talking about the little box on the map that's oranged out with the yellow stripes, is that, that's not in the city limits, it's actually part of the urban growth of the county, but that is restricted. And also it would make it difficult for hooking up utilities because our utilities don't run out that far. So on the wild dryer, seventy-one acres that you have green asterisks, that's even further outside the city limits. How would that tie in? Would we be able to take, if, if the county adopts this trade and that happens to be one of them, not saying it is, but if it was one of them, would the city limits exceed out to that new area? Or is that still going to be county land?
It'll be county land.
So why would we need to send utilities out there? It would just be an option if they want to pay for it or?
Yeah, well, they would have to get contiguous first before we provide sewer. That's the challenge with having this, this area. It'll add capacity in the sense, we've added capacity to the UGA, but will we be able to meet our twenty-year targets? Will we be able to get sewer to there in twenty years? Don't know that. That's why I say it'll add capacity. It may not help with meeting the two hundred and twenty-two unit target. We have to get contiguous either through annexations here and annexing this land, which is LRS. That's why I think it's going to be challenging. The county will have to justify why it's okay here. No, there are some clauses in the countywide planning policies that said, that says that lands such as this, if it provides contiguity to developable land, it should be considered. So there are some clauses to support that. Now, we're providing this as an option above the two hundred and twenty-two. So they should be really willing to support Oak Harbor or growth in the city or in urban areas more than the county. And that's, these are the strategies that will help them, I think.
Okay. The second one is on Waterloo. Looks like it's got wetlands on it. How would that impact us wanting to do a trade with the county? Would it have any impact on that as far as building?
So those are the areas for expansion. And there are some clauses to remove critical areas from expansion areas if we wanted to. Again, we have regulations to, to be able to mitigate and have density transfers or bonuses, you know, away from the wetlands when you build. So there are several ways that we can address that, but this is just a starting point. And if the county brings up critical areas and so on, then we'll discuss more about how to, how to handle that. Right now, it's just a shotgun approach, so to speak. Let's just try and get acreage out there and start the discussion.
Okay. And my last question is, is more of a request. After negotiations with the county, is there anything, are there any studies that we're going to look at for traffic after we find out where we're looking at putting these? Because depending upon where we negotiate and if, all the what ifs, once that's all said and done, looking at like up by Walmart, that's a congested area. Out on Highway 20 North, just as you're heading out of town, that's a really significant congested area. So wherever we build, I would recommend that we do a new traffic study. I know we did one, what was it, last year? Where they briefed us on the bicycle lanes and the bus routes and all that. I, I would highly encourage us to, to do another one.
The EIS process that I, the potential EIS route, if we go down that route, that is one of the big studies that they will do as part of that, is the transportation impacts of the expansion and then the twenty-year development potential and all of that.
Perfect. And I think that's all I have right now.
I just wanted to add that the mayor and I also attend IRTPO and COG. And so we participate regularly with Island County on talking about road projects and where we prioritize in that. And then we work very closely with the city engineer and the public works director on that. And they also participate in county meetings around road projects. So we're trying to stay very heavily involved in that and make sure that we're advocating for the needs of this community.
Awesome. Thank you.
I, just to sort of tag on to that, could you talk a little bit more about like the Hillcrest area and why we as the city are interested in having sort of utility lines run through it and what that, why we're sort of positioning ourselves to do that now rather than, or I guess instead of leaving it well enough alone or if there's a bigger story there?
Yeah, absolutely. So the underlying principle is that all areas in the UGA eventually should become part of the city. That is basically why you have them in the urban growth area. And I think originally, when they drew the UGA, there may have been some criteria that already urbanized areas should be in a UGA and not outside. So since these lands were already developed and they were developed outside the city, they don't have city sewer, they don't have city water, they have their own water district and most of them are on septic systems. But they are there and so they are included in the UGA. So eventually, they should all be part of the city. And we have several other pockets and maybe the bigger map shows that. So we have these areas, all these areas, all these areas that are already developed, that are in the, within the UGA, within the city, but not in the city limits. And so eventually, you want to get services to them and bring them into the city. But what, there is no economic drive or incentive for the city to proactively build a sewer system and bring them in, just because of the cost and the economics of it. So the policy is that these areas will eventually get to the end of their facility lifespan and would want to connect to the city. And the city would be happy to annex and provide that sewer or water connection that they need. There are several challenges to doing this because there are probably water district, homeowners associations, you know, common agreements between all the people to get sewer. So a lot of this is not ripe yet in the sense for discussion at this time in terms of how do you bring them in as a whole? And if you do bring them in as a whole, then as a city, you have to find ways to use your capital facilities plan to try and fund them with public projects, right? So the ideal way for the city to be efficient about it is to actually bring these properties in one by one, as long as they're contiguous, you get them to, the applicant is motivated to get a sewer connection. And if you can bring sewer, public sewer close to them, because in properties, somewhere in the middle here has a septic system failure, it's difficult to get to a city sewer. They have to cross so many other private properties or whatever to get there. And they're bearing the expense of it till other people connect. Now, we have late commerce agreement and so on, where a property owner can put a sewer connection in, and then the subsequent connections will pay back for that money that you, that you put in. So we have systems for that. But that's kind of how most of these annexations will occur or they will come to city services by connecting to those systems. So the strategy is, let's try and get a public sewer system as close as possible to them. That is the strategy. And the, and the way that you would do it is to create demand past their area so that they're able to fund or motivated to extend the, the infrastructure to serve them. In the process, there's benefit, public benefit in getting sewer to the proximity. Is it, am I, did I get most, okay?
Yeah. Perfect. Thank you very much. You had some questions? Okay. I think that was my own, I guess. So going back to the wetland conversation, right? Is there, you had mentioned that the city has density bonuses and other sort of incentives within our code to facilitate that conservation while also facilitating housing goals or however it winds up? On the other side, are there any particularly, I guess, strong rea- On the other side, are there any particularly, I guess, strong reasons why we would want to leave wetlands in the county? Let them, you know, let their regulations handle that? And, or is it, do we think that it's better to, to take that on for ourselves and navigate it through our process?
Good question. I think you would want to determine on a case-by-case basis. I don't know if you want to have a general policy that you don't want to bring any more wetlands into the city. I think they are green areas, they are vital areas of the ecosystem and that you bring them in when appropriate. And I think the regulations in the city and county are not that different in terms of protecting these resources. They're comparable and they are equal in most instances to try and protect these resources. So, I think it shouldn't be a barrier in thinking that somehow critical areas such as these will do better off in the county than they will do in the city. I think there are regulations to address them similarly in both areas. So, I don't think it should, you can look at it on a case-by-case basis and see if something makes sense in this area, if it should be out. And we're willing to do that. But I think overall, the policy should be, you know, you bring them in if they're, if they're integral to, you know, the land and the development around it.
Cool. Very, great. Thank you very much. Okay. Any last thoughts, any last questions? Okay. Well, thank you for the update.
All right. Thank you.
All right. With that, we will move along to our member comments. One of the things that I have on my, on my piece of paper is, yeah, that we don't have enough discussion material for our July meeting. And so, if we want to cancel that meeting and have our next meeting in August, we could entertain a motion for that.
Make a motion that we cancel the meeting for July 8th and schedule the next meeting for the 12th of August.
Second.
All right. Moved by Frye, second by Bradley. All those in favor? Aye. All right. Motion passes unanimously. So, if there's, does anyone have any other member comments before we start to wrap up? Okay. Very cool. So, with that, our next scheduled meeting is going to be August 12th, 2025. Maybe we'll have a new planning director. And with that, I will take a motion to adjourn.
Make a motion, we adjourn.
Second.
Moved by Frye, second by Bradley. All those in favor? Aye. All right. It is 6:53. Have a good night, everyone.